The meeting of the school committee for Tuesday, September 7th will come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Avizay?
Yeah.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Ms. Cardello?
Present.
Mayor Di Maria?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. La Monica?
Here.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Panerisi?
Here.
Ms. Sarni?
Here.
Ms. Dinah Lewis? Mr. Parker?
Present. Ms. Lewis is not here tonight due to a previous engagement. And we have 10 members present, we have a quorum. So if we could all please rise and salute the flag. But with that, I'll be calling for a moment of silence in respect to James Burley. Jimmy Burley was the younger brother of Clerk of Committees John Burley. Whoever he's known Johnny for a lifetime. And previously clerk of committees, John was on the city council. And a very productive and good member of the city council. So if you could have a moment of silence and respect to his brother Jimmy, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag- -of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, next item of business, please.
Item number three is the reading of the records from August 30th, 2021. Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made to waive the reading and place on file. Where we- Where we have the full body, no one has participated remotely, I will take a voice vote on this one. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So moved, you have accepted the records and waived the reading and placed on file. Next item, please.
Roman numeral four is public comment.
Make a motion to help a public comment.
Second the motion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to open up a public comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved, we have opened up Roman numeral four for public comment. Mrs. Leston, do we have anybody that signed in for public comment? Okay, you know, we advertised that people can participate remotely on public comment. We have nobody in the queue. Ladies and gentlemen, your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to close public comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, you have closed public comment. Roman numeral five, Madam Superintendent.
Roman numeral five is the superintendent's report. And as usual, we're going to start with item number one, which is the superintendent's update. So good evening, everyone at home, everyone here in the library with us today. It is my pleasure to be speaking to you on the same day that all of our students at every grade level return to school for full-time in-person teaching and learning. This is the first time we have been together in over a year. Since March of 2019, actually. And while we are by no means at a point when we can talk about COVID in the past tense, there is definitely no comparison to where we stand this evening as compared to where we were in September of 2020. Tonight's report includes the introduction of nine new academic leaders who have joined our district or assumed new roles within the Everett Public Schools. We will go over the COVID-19 data that we are constantly monitoring. I will provide an update on the September after-school enrichment program that we are offering to all of our K through eight students at no cost to families. And finally, we will go over some of the many grant highlights of the past year, all of which illustrate how we are moving forward, how we are moving forward in the EPS on multiple levels, using any and all means at our disposal. So as I just said, today marked our first day of school for every grade from pre-K through 12th grade. Our first day at the elementary, middle, and high school levels was last week, on Tuesday, August 31st. And our pre-K programs at the Adams and Webster Extension began today. So school year 2021, 2022 is completely underway. I think Whittier School Principal Mike McLucus said it best when he said, "No mask could obscure the unbridled joy of the smiling eyes and jubilant voices of our students' families and staff as school reopened." And I just want to thank each and every EPS staff member for the role they played in our successful start of 2020, 2022, 2021, 2022. From an operational standpoint, the first week went rather smoothly. In fact, walking around the inside of our buildings, it definitely felt kind of like business as usual. But certainly, there was definitely, you know, even a greater feeling of energy and excitement in the air. And also just the return to many of the traditions, routines, and practices that one might term a normal school day. In hearing from one of our teachers, actually, many teachers and educators sent stories from the first week of school. And I think my favorite one was from Parlin School 4th grade teacher Melanie Peddell, who said that on the first day of school, a student approached her and asked if she was, in fact, his teacher. And when she said yes, he handed her a beautiful bouquet of red roses upside down. And I thought that was a very sweet and funny story. One that actually too has real sense of symbolism as we all try to get things turned right side up again. So I just wanted to share that story. At this point, I want to take a moment to introduce the talented group of individuals who recently assumed leadership positions within the Everett Public Schools, both at the district and school level. First is Dr. Andrea Tringali, who has moved into the role of Vice Principal of Everett High School. Dr. Tringali previously served as our World Languages Coordinator. She is a longtime Everett educator who taught Italian and served as the advisor of the Italian Honor Society and the Key Club. She has ample experience in working on school-wide initiatives and projects, including the formation of the EHS Academy Model, as well as our mock interview and career exploration events. Brittany Puleo is the first ever Assistant Principal at the Devon School, where she will work alongside Dr. Brian Wallace. Dr. Puleo has been with the EPS since 2013 and is an original staff member of the Devon School, where she began as an elementary special education teacher. In 2017, she transitioned to the role of Education Team Leader, a role that enabled her to form close connections with parents and outside agencies to better support the students at the Devens. Ms. Puleo, Dr. Puleo holds a bachelor's and master's degree from Riviera University and a doctorate degree in pre-K through 12 leadership from Endicott College. Narissa Perez is the new Assistant Principal at the Caverian School, where she joins the leadership team of Principal Alex Nauman and Assistant Principal Janet Taylor. Ms. Perez, who comes to us after having worked for the Cambridge and Arlington School Systems, earned a master's degree in elementary education and human family development, specializing in multicultural education. During her career, Ms. Perez has served as a first-year teacher mentor, a supervising practitioner for student teachers, program supervisor, seminar leader, field placement assistant director, associate certification and licensure officer, and a recruiter for professional programs and urban outreach. James Murphy is joining the leadership team at the Parlin School, where he will serve as the Assistant Principal, or where he is serving as the Assistant Principal alongside Principal Dennis Lynch and Assistant Principal Stanley Chamberlain. Mr. Murphy is an Everett High School graduate who has worked in the district for 15 years. He has served as an inclusion teacher, a 7th grade math teacher, a math interventionist, a math instructional coach, and as the district's data coordinator. He holds a bachelor's degree from Boston University and a master's in education in middle school mathematics from American International College. Moving to the district-wide positions, Patrick Quigley has joined us to serve in the important role of manager of social emotional learning and wellness. Mr. Quigley is a licensed independent clinical social worker who obtained his master's degree from the Silverman School of Social Work, Social Work and Public Health at Hunter College in New York City. He comes to the work of social emotional learning through his experiences leading summer camps and after-school programming in New York City and through special education roles he's had here in Massachusetts. As a clinical social worker, Mr. Quigley's professional interests center on child and adolescent development, crisis response, trauma-sensitive spaces, and the work of equity and social justice in schools. He also specializes in multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, program assessment and development, staff supervision and consultation, and family, community, and school partnerships. Our new Director of English Learners is Brittany Hay. A 2009 graduate of Syracuse University, Ms. Hay began her career with the Lawrence Public Schools, serving as an ELA teacher and ESL instructional coach. During her time in Lawrence, Ms. Hay worked with students who were overage and undercredited, which is a reflection of her passion for re-engagement and dropout prevention efforts. In 2019, she joined the EPS as the ESL Department Head at Everett High School. And now Ms. Hay will oversee all of the great work we do for English learners at the district level. Genevieve McDonough is our new Director of K-8, ELA, and Literacy. Ms. McDonough is actually returning to Everett after working for the past years in Boston. She served as part of the leadership team at the Hernandez K-8 Dual Language School. And most recently, she supported English learner instruction and dual-language programs at the district level for the Boston Public Schools. She has been a teacher in both Boston and Everett, where she started her career. Ms. McDonough earned a bachelor's in elementary education and psychology from Bridgewater State, a master's in elementary education from Framingham State, and her CAGS or certificate of advanced graduate study in educational administration from UMass Boston. Rupi Corr is our new K-8 STEM Director. She previously served as biology, sheltered biology, and sheltered chemistry teacher at Everett High School, as well as the district's robotics coordinator. Previously, Ms. Corr was a special education, math, and science inclusion teacher at the McCall Middle School in Winchester. Ms. Corr is particularly enthusiastic about implementing a rigorous, accessible, and culturally responsive inquiry-based STEM curriculum that sparks investigation and collaboration amongst students and educators. And finally, join me in welcoming Amanda Hoover to the role of Manager of Supplemental Services. Ms. Hoover will be in charge of organizing and coordinating all of the supplemental academic and interest-based programs for Everett Public Schools for students for grades pre-K through 12. Ms. Hoover has a diverse professional background, in which she's been a teacher, a caseworker, a therapeutic mentor, and a residential counselor. Ms. Hoover holds a bachelor of arts and master's degrees from Merrimack College, and she holds certifications in therapeutic crisis intervention and trauma-informed care. In addition to these nine very capable school and district leaders, we have hired for this school year 90 new staff members that includes both a combination of previous vacancies as well as newly created positions, all of which were outlined in the FY22 budget. So please join me in welcoming all of these wonderful and amazing professionals to the Everett Public Schools, where I hope they will have a long-lasting career. So as was the case last year, the EPS will continue to focus on the number of confirmed cases among school-aged children. So this slide shows the month-by-month case number of Everett residents aged 19 and under. The August total of 36 does indicate an upward spike, although it does not compare to the numbers we have experienced of much of last school year, so that's great. So far this month, there are 15 confirmed cases among 0- to 19-year-olds for this first week of September. The district is currently registering students in grades K through 8 for our free September after-school program. We are calling this our September Enrichment Academy. And it runs daily from 2:45 to 6:00 p.m. at the Caverian, Lafayette, Madeleine English, Parlin, Webster, and Whittier Schools. The academies are staffed by EPS teachers, paraprofessionals, guidance counselors, and administrative assistants, all of whom bring a diverse skill set to the program. For students, this program offers academic support, interactive activities, and relationship building as they start their journey into the 2021, 2022 school year. So the September Academy is helping us transition our students back into the school year. And in October, which we will discuss in more detail during our regular agenda, later this evening, we will start our regular after-school programming. Parents and guardians can quickly and easily register for the students for the September program by completing the necessary form, which is available in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole on our website. In addition, we've shared flyers with families and our family liaisons at the Parent Information Center, who are notifying families about the opportunity when they register for school. We've also sent out a robocall about the program, as well as a dojo message from school leaders. To date, we have hired more than 30 staff members across all six schools. And our total enrollment stands at 443 and counting. The breakdown of enrollees by school is 117 at the Whittier, 87 at the Parlin, 65 at the Caverian, 70 at the English, 32 at the Webster, and 72 at the Lafayette. We do currently have waitlists, and we are looking to onboard more employees so we can accommodate all of our families. In fact, last, we did send out information again today. And between last night and about 4:00 p.m. today, we had an additional 111 new registrants, which I think is an indication that our outreach efforts are successful. So we will quickly get them off the waitlist and into our school programs. Finally, tonight, I, oh, and just to be clear, not all 111 were on a waitlist. We do have a waitlist, but many of them got right in. Finally, tonight, I did want to shine a bright light on the tremendously successful grant strategy we've implemented over the past year. So we have been really exhaustive in our efforts to not only secure every single dollar we can, but to put it to the best possible use. For this, I would do want to thank Chief Executive Officer Anu Janth and our Budget and Grants Director Shirley Pang for elevating the EHS in this fundamentally important area. So as this slide shows, we have greatly expanded our grant resources. From the 2019, 2020 to last school year, we increased our grant total from 21 to 31 grants. And our overall dollar figure of grants increased from a shade over $6.5 million to $9.4 million. Most telling of all, we secured 14 new grants totaling more than $1.2 million last school year. So our grant planning is deliberate and intentional. We are careful to pursue opportunities that advance our core values and address areas that are perhaps unaccounted for or not fully funded during the regular budget cycle. It is also a very collaborative process as educators throughout the district work directly with Anu and Shirley in learning about and pursuing worthwhile opportunities. So to highlight just a few of the grants, and you will receive a full report of all of the grants at an upcoming meeting, but I felt like these six grants illustrated sort of the breadth and depth of our efforts in this area. They kind of show how comprehensive and thoughtful a grant strategy can reach across so many sectors of the school district, from the straightforward to the creative, and from large amounts of money to more modest amounts that demonstrate that every single dollar counts. So number one highlights a grant that we use to provide direct support to students and families in completing the free applications for Federal Student Aid, or FAFSA. This is a critical process, but definitely a daunting one as parents of college-eligible students can definitely attest. So specifically, we use the grant to offer one-on-one support in fulfilling, in filling out FAFSA documents and paperwork. We received $15,000 for this last year, and we have actually already received a $10,000 grant for FAFSA for FY22, our current year. The second one refers to a grant of more than $775,000 that we received as part of the Competitive Remote Learning Technology Essentials Program. So this money was meant to address remote learning and technology needs and to ensure they had, our families and students had adequate access to technology. So the EPS directed the money to the purchase of iPads for pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and special education students, as well as Wi-Fi hotspots for families throughout the district. And this is obviously a very prime example of a grant that not only met our immediate needs last year, but does also meet our long-term objectives. Number three refers to a financial literacy grant. So the purpose of this competitive state grant program was to support districts in the selection or development of materials, curriculum, professional development, and in-person or virtual learning related to financial literacy. So we achieved this by developing and hosting a financial literacy program for students and families that was held on Saturday so that it was more accessible to a wider audience, and that was for $15,000. Number four, the DESI Translation and Interpretation Grant, was immediately put to use by the EPS in the form of LineBridge, which is the service that enables staff to access high-quality translation service in hundreds of languages. So we continue to utilize LineBridge as a tool to communicate with families. Last year, this grant that we received started at $10,000. And then after receiving all of our data on how well we were utilizing the program, DESI actually extended that to $20,000 based on our data. So that actually ended up covering most of our translation and interpretation needs for last school year. Number five centers around a digital literacy grant that Everett High teachers use to develop a course within the One Week Academy model that challenges English learners to move, improve academic achievement while emphasizing English language and primary language learning skills. So that was for $2,450. And number six highlights the $2,000 box grant to fund a physical activity program for students of all ages and abilities. And this includes lesson plans, training, and supports designed to promote up to 45 minutes a day of exercise and movement. And I do want to thank school committee member Almeida Boros for bringing this grant to our attention. And that is sort of the process that we have been using. We've been taking recommendations that we get from teachers, educators, or other community members around the district. And Shirley Pang, she will vet those grants. Then we also, she canvases for other grants. And then she works to support educators to apply for those grants, kind of teaching them what that process looks like and walking them through it from beginning to end. So we're trying to utilize all different points for obtaining as much, as many dollars as we can in order to make sure that our students receive every possible service and support. So thank you for your time, as always, and I am happy to, at this point, answer any questions.
Any questions, Madam Superintendent? Mayor Di Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, great work. It's excellent work on behalf of, was it Shirley who does the grants, you said? Yeah. It's really, it's really nice to see. Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Cardello?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Superintendent. One question. The people that we've hired, and maybe even other people that you've hired, maybe within, you know, for this session this year, do they already have this, everyone have the certifications needed for their positions? Or some people are going to have to be put on waivers just because, so you know, everybody's looking, being looked at right now in all districts?
Absolutely, so that's a great question. So yes, we are making sure that everybody has their appropriate licensure in place. And you know, I definitely have my license, and so you don't have to worry about that. But yes, we are definitely taking a closer look at some of those licenses and making sure that everybody has them in place. We do have some school leaders, like last year, who are on some emergency waivers, or actually potentially not school leaders. But that is still, DESI did extend that for this year. So we did have eligible teachers and other professionals that did apply for and receive an emergency waiver. But yes, we are definitely making sure that everybody has all of their appropriate licensure.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Thank you.
Ms. Murray?
I was wondering if you would speak a little bit about the hiring process? Because I know the hiring process for in-building assistant principals and support staff is different than it has been in previous years. So I was wondering if you would share that with the public a little bit, how that's changed?
Absolutely, so we really have tried to make sure that we have multiple stakeholders at the table when we do any kind of hiring. So I can walk you through specifically, for example, you know, the assistant principals that we just hired. So there will be a group that is put together by, with the principal, and either teachers from the school, we sometimes have had union representatives, which are also teachers, but you know, leadership representatives. Sometimes we've had community members, in fact, depending on the position itself, we do make sure that we have diverse opinions. So we have people on this body who've actually served in that capacity before as well. There is a rubric, they score the candidates, they discuss the candidates, and then they put forward their top two. And then those come to me for a final interview. For the high school, it's a little bit different because there is, it's a larger school and there's a larger, you know, there's a different leadership. There's so much leadership, there's a greater leadership structure. So the final interview is actually with me and the principal. And the initial interviews are with deans, teachers, you know, district leaders, sometimes the HR director does participate as well in order to make sure that the process is being done with fidelity. As for the school-based positions, I think those are also different. They, the school leaders are, again, bringing a diverse group of stakeholders to the table. And in the past, I think those have also had to go through the superintendent's office. Right now, they do go through central office, they go through our HR director just to make sure that we're doing the query, we have all of the background checks, we're doing any reference checks. But those are actually left to the expertise and autonomy of the principals and their interview committee who decides. So those, I don't approve every single one of those. I leave that to the school administrator and their team, who I believe are best suited to make that decision.
Thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Sarni?
Thank you. You mentioned in your presentation that the after-school program from K through 8 is free for one month?
Yes.
Okay. And after that, they, is there a scale that they would be paying for?
That's part of the, what we're voting on tonight for the after-school programming.
Okay.
So yes, that would come with the price proposal that was part of the RFP.
Okay, and the parents that are in now for the month free, they do know that after that, it's a cost to them after?
Yes, in fact, I think, yes, we have made sure that they've gotten that. They're actually very anxious to sign up for October. I think there was definitely, yeah. There was definitely, I think, a question of whether they would be programming October and beyond. And I think that some people were even hesitant to even sign up for September, not sure what, you know, because you have to plan childcare, determining what was going to have to happen after that. But we have definitely let families know that it is September 1 to October 1. And, you know, hopefully, we will have programming in place for our regular after-school by then.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm trying to mute myself more and more for the feedback, so bear with me. So is anybody else who has not spoken on the matter? Okay, seeing none, thank you for your update.
Thank you so much. So we will move on to item number two, which is an introduction to City Year Greater Boston, who has joined us here tonight. We are very excited to be partnering with City Year Greater Boston, which will be supporting our students and staff in all of our K-8 schools in 2021, 2022. City Year is a proven leader in offering school-based supports and boosting student outcomes. And I know that this is something we've talked about in the past as part of our budget investment plan. So we're excited that this was something that we could bring to fruition. It is impossible for us to briefly encapsulate City Year's track history and record of success. So I would like to respectfully request permission to invite Nancy Jones, the Managing Director of Development and Communications for City Year Greater Boston, to join us. She is here with us in person, and there are several City Year representatives who are also joining us remotely as well. So moved?
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion that has been made and seconded to invite Ms. Nancy Jones from City Year to be paid before us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Welcome, Ms. Jones, welcome to Everett High School.
Thank you so much, I'm so excited to be back in a school. I'm actually going to turn it over, though, to my colleague Marika, who's going to kick us off this afternoon. And we have some slides that we're going to share. And our colleague Courtney is going to tee those up.
Thank you so much, Nancy. I'm going to give Courtney just a quick minute to get everything going. And it looks like he's there. First and foremost, thank you so much for having us join you all today. My name is Marika Sokad, I use a she/her pronouns. And I'm an impact director here with City Year Greater Boston. Tonight, you're going to hear about City Year Greater Boston from me and three of my colleagues. We're going to cover a variety of topics, including, Courtney, can you go ahead and head it to the next slide? Thank you so much. We're going to talk a little bit about what matters to us as City Year Boston and why it matters. We're going to talk about who we are as City Year Greater Boston, our approach to service, and our impact with some of the schools that we've already been partnering with over the past few years. It's going to be a lot of information in a very short amount of time, so we will make- going to be a lot of information in a very short amount of time, so we will make sure to leave some space for questions at the end. So if anything does come up, feel free to jot it down. Um, and at the end, there will be space for us to address any questions that come up. Um, and to kick us off, my colleagues and I want to share some of City Year Greater Boston's core values with you all. These values, some of which are listed on the screen, um, help guide us in our service as we work towards our mission. I'll actually be starting by sharing the value, um, that resonates the most with me in my day-to-day work as an impact director, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues to share which ones resonate with them. Um, so the value that I leverage the most in my role is students-first, collaboration always. Um, as an impact director, I have the privilege of partnering with, um, Everett Public Schools as well as Boston Public Schools. And within that, I leverage this value to make sure I'm really staying centered on what is best for students and really trying to understand that as I work with partners. Um, and it is a privilege to be able to partner with so many schools in such a unique way. Um, and this value really helps me to stay grounded in that. Um, and I'll actually give it right back to Nancy to share the value that resonates the most with her.
We're tag teaming. So for me, um, it's really all about, why I get out of bed every single day is the belief of the power of young people. I'm a mother of four children. They've all gone through, um, high school and some through college. And one of my daughters did a core year, um, so she serviced City Year New Hampshire a few years ago. And I see what she learned and the values that she learned and the commitment to community and to others, um, show up for, in her, every single day. Um, she still carries that with her years later. So I'm going to hand it to Courtney.
Awesome, awesome. Hello, everybody. My name is Courtney Lynn Daly. I have the privilege of being an impact director with City Year. Um, he/him/his, um, pronouns. And a value that I really connect to, and the, the value that I'm embodying this particular year, is service to a cause greater than self. Um, reason being is because I truly believe that the work that we do and the work that's happening inside these schools is honestly bigger than myself, and that I'm just, uh, I have the privilege and honor of being a part of that work, right? Um, and one thing that the AmeriCorps members that Marika and I have the privilege of leading, um, do is sometimes, like, pick a value that they kind of embody for this particular year. And, uh, and this year, this is one of the values that they have, you know, chose to embody this particular year, because if you can see in the slide, it says that we dedicate ourselves to addressing shared civic challenges through unified action, with the heavy emphasis of unified, because truly, it takes a village for us to really work together to make sure that great change is happening, but also recognizing that this change is something that, um, surpasses who, surpasses us individually. And, um, I'll pass it off to Bethany to kind of give some additional insight of this particular value.
Thanks, Courtney. Uh, my name's Bethany Reynolds. I'm the Civic Engagement Director for City Year Greater Boston. I use the she series. Um, and Courtney and I couldn't, we couldn't decide which one of us got to do service to a cause greater than self. So I'm going to talk a little bit about why it resonates with me. Um, I've had the joy of leading our volunteer engagement efforts at City Year Greater Boston for a while now. And one of the things I love the most about that is bringing volunteers into the schools, um, and kind of having them join the community, whether it's for a day or for a longer period of time, to really invest in the same work that we are and building that bridge. Uh, it's something I really care about. So I'm going to pass it back to Marika.
Thank you, Nancy, Courtney, and Bethany for sharing your thoughts. Um, I am going to, um, I am going to transition a little bit into our mission. Um, so I spoke briefly on the previous slide about our values guiding us to ensure that we are consistently working towards our mission of building a more equitable future. Um, so I also wanted to take a moment to share this mission with you. Um, you'll see the mission on the screen in front of you, and I'll give, I'll pause for just a few moments so folks can read this. Alrighty, so hopefully that was enough time for you to read the mission. Um, as, as we work towards building a more equitable future together, our vision for schools, the schools that we partner with is anchored in educational equity, as you saw from the mission on the previous slide. Um, and in that, we also have to acknowledge the diverse needs of our partner, of our, those schools that we partner with. Um, so each school day, we are really working alongside those teachers and administration that we work with to build, uh, relationships, to provide direct support for holistic skill development of our students, and to create positive environments where students can maximize their learning. So through this collaboration, we're really contributing to a vision of what schools can and should be for our students. Um, so I've talked a little bit about how we stay grounded in the work that we're doing, and, um, what are some of our core values. I also want to touch on why this is important and why the work and service that we provide is important. So from the graphic on this screen, you'll see that there are 74 million young people in the United States. And of those young people, 10 million face a dual challenge of living in communities of poverty and being surrounded by others living in poverty. This leads to an increased likelihood of them facing greater stress, challenges, and adversity over time. The high school graduation rates are the lowest for the young people in concentrated poverty due to systemic barriers and limitations placed on them, including a lack of material and non-material educational resources. And so Courtney, if you go to the next slide, um, this slide actually highlights that this challenge is concentrated as 4% of the nation's districts produce half of the non-graduates. So I'm going to say that one more time. The challenge is concentrated as 4% of the nation's district produce half of the non-graduates. And as City Year, we're actually uniquely positioned to address this challenge. We have a 96% overlap with the districts that are disproportionately driving the challenge. Um, I'm actually going to pass it over to Nancy, who's going to talk a little bit about, um, our service model and how it has developed over time to address this challenge.
Thanks, Marika. So I'm going to give you a little look, um, backward on where we came from and where we are today, and then, um, some insight into our model specifically here in Boston and how we operate. So on the next slide, you'll see, um, just a little evolution of where we've been. So City Year is more than 30 years old. Um, we started originally as working with the AmeriCorps program to send volunteers into communities to do lots of different things. In our 2.0 version, we really came in and focused on education equity and developed this model called Whole School, Whole Child, that Courtney will talk about a little bit later. And then on the next slide, you'll see where we are today, which is City Year 3.0, we're calling it, where we're really taking a concentrated look on education equity. And we, internally, we call it like a double bottom-line approach. So we're partnering directly with schools, teachers, districts, to impact students in the classroom through the AmeriCorps members, but then also empowering and engaging the AmeriCorps members and our alumni to make meaningful differences in their communities. Um, and adjacent to that, we're also working, excuse me, very hard on Capitol Hill and Beacon Hill to advance funding and legislation that supports education equity. On the next slide, you'll see where we are nationally. So as Marika said, we overlap with 96% of the 4% of districts. These are the 29 sites that were nationally. We also serve, um, in sites in the United Kingdom and in South Africa, which I hope to go visit one day, when we're allowed to travel again. Then here in Boston, um, on the next slide, you'll see how we are organized. So we have a board of directors that consists of 20 people right now. Um, I'm super excited to share with you all and the community that we have a number of positions open on our board of directors right now, and we've really are looking for representation from the Everett community, as now we consider ourselves partners in this community and this work. So through the coming weeks, um, we'll be in touch with you. Actually, our board chair wished that he could be here tonight with us. Um, his father unexpectedly passed away, and, um, he cannot join us, but he was disappointed not to be here, but excited to work with the community, um, to identify some members to serve on our board, um, moving forward. That's our staffing model. Below, 70% of our total staff supports direct student impacts and outcomes. And so our revenue pie, the four purple slices are private revenue, so revenue that comes from corporations, foundations, and individuals. The green slices of pie are public revenue, so revenue that comes from AmeriCorps and from school districts like Everett. And then the next slide, you'll see how we spend it. So the big purple, the whole pie really is on personnel. Um, so most of our, 81% of our budget goes to personnel and benefits. And then on the next slide, I believe that I'm going to hand it over to Courtney, who's going to lean a little bit more on our approach and how we choose AmeriCorps members and the difference that they make in the classroom.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much, Nancy. I'm going to talk specifically about that, man, our approach, our approach. So, we aspire to partner with districts like Everett Public Schools that are committed to creating educational equity in the same way that we are. Educational equity means eliminating the predictability of success or failure based on identity markers. It also means that all children are provided the environment, supports, and opportunities to succeed in school and in life. For us, this starts with forming and deploying diverse teams to each school partner, our recruiting and placing diverse teams of AmeriCorps members in schools. Um, we bolster systematically under-resourced schools to become adaptive spaces that maximize potential of all students while also empowering young people to develop the mindsets and skills to become diverse change agents, working across lines of differences. Okay? Once we deploy our diverse teams to schools, we and our AmeriCorps members get straight to work implementing City Year's Whole School, Whole Child model, or as we like to call it, Whiz Wick. Um, on this slide, you'll see six fundamental elements of our model proven through numerous research studies to highly, to be highly effective. Um, in a moment, we'll share how effective we know this model is, but, um, to truly kind of break down what this is, is we have our AmeriCorps, AmeriCorps members come to the schools, um, a little bit before the students come, and then we do some things called like morning greeting, where we greet the students as they come in. And then when the students are here, we're in the classroom with them, you know, in the classrooms with them, supporting the teachers, helping the students continue to grasp the information through attendance, through, um, academic support and socio-emotional learning. And then, um, then after the school, we, um, participate in this extended-day programming, where we do some additional tutoring and mentoring during that time period as well. And, um, that kind of cultivates just the whole day, you know, the whole school, the whole child. So it's not like just one sector. We tend to try to kind of go and support students in many different forms of ways. Um, this kind of breaks down a little bit more what I was speaking about. Each individual school has a full-time staff member, so an impact manager, that leads a team of individuals that are really going inside these schools, really building those relationships through tutoring, mentoring, socio-emotional skill development, and attendance coaching, and developing a relationship with the teachers, and also, um, building a foundation of partnership with our administrators. So, um, our impact managers have been working really hard and dedicating really a lot of time to be able to support our AmeriCorps members. And also, we have something called an instructional coach that comes in and helps the AmeriCorps members, um, put more tools in their tool belts when it comes to tutoring, you know? So throughout this full year, they're also learning, the AmeriCorps members are also learning and developing themselves to be able to become stronger tutors, stronger mentors, stronger role models within that process as well. So, um, that's just a little bit of what the AmeriCorps members do in the day-to-day and the different supports that we provide. And this year, like we said, we're going to be in Everett. We're super excited. Um, these are the schools that we're going to be at this particular year, um, at the Convairian, Lafayette, Madeline English, the Parlin, the Whittier School. We've already been meeting with these wonderful, um, administrators there, um, kind of setting up the structure of what City Year can look like at these particular schools, and we are super excited to be there, um, to be able to support your amazing students and things of that nature. So, awesome. So, let's talk a little bit about how we know it's working, okay? Cool. So, we shared with you a bit about who we are, what we're doing, where we'll be serving in the community, but also, City Year, we are consistently evaluating and refining our practice. Three recent studies validate our Whole School, Whole Child model we're about to deploy in Everett, and these are the ones, as you can see right there on the screen. Perfect. Um, based at our downtown headquarters, it's also a national research team, and together with districts like you, um, they, they progress annually how everything is going. Perfect. Um, City Year is, is proud to have served at multiple schools, but an example of this is how we've served at, um, the English and Burke High School, um, in Boston Public Schools for the past eight to 10 years. Over that time period, students have increased their graduation rates by 31 and 22 points, while all BPS students made 6% gains over the same time period. Charlestown and Brighton are also two partners that we worked with as well. They were a little bit newer, so they're in the three to four-year frame, um, and they have been making remarkable gains as well. So, uh, but that's solely about our in-service pros, like, in-school projects and things of that nature. We also have some additional services that we provide as well. And I'm going to kick it off to a wonderful friend of mine, Bethany, who's going to talk a little bit more about that.
Awesome. Thanks, Courtney. Um, so as Courtney said, we have some additional, uh, services that we provide, and one of those is organized by my team, um, the Civic Engagement Team. We organize and lead volunteer engagement for City Year Greater Boston in a number of ways, but primarily through service projects that are either creating resources for students, like student kits, classroom kits, or doing beautification projects in schools and community centers to improve the, the climate. Um, so we wanted to highlight this as kind of a component of City Year that we're really excited to bring to Everett schools and the surrounding community. The stats that you see on the screen are from last year when we were mostly virtual, um, but we're also excited to be getting back to kind of smaller in-person projects as well. If you go to the next slide, um, you can see some of the past projects that we've done, primarily in Boston schools. Um, but again, just really excited to be bringing this to Everett. Uh, and with that, I think we're going to wrap up and take questions.
Okay, thank you for your time. Uh, any questions of, uh, Ms. Caddello?
Sorry about that. Thank you. I have one question, and it's regarding listening and trying to grasp all this great program, and I'm sure it's extremely successful, and I'm excited about it. But I heard them say something about after-school. So will they be partnering with our after-school provider, or will this be totally separate and something that they do on their own during, like, for somebody that's not signed up for the after-school program?
So, sorry, so it, you're asking if they are going to stay beyond the regular school day, and if they would be there after-school? Yes, so they would be available, because really, it's students-driven, so it's going to be about the students. So yes, they would be there to support the students all throughout the day. Not the whole day, they don't come in as early. So it's sort of, uh, towards the later part of the day and into after-school.
Thank you. Uh, would this be part of the after-school program that's coming into the district, or is this totally separate?
So it's also dependent on what the principal, um, and the City Year team determines is the need of the students. So this is a very collaborative process with the principals. I do want them to have, um, input into how this is structured at their school to meet their particular student needs. Um, they, again, like they mentioned, they provide some after-school, they provide tutoring and mentoring, and some of that can happen after-school. Um, and so it's, it's really about the services that they provide. Um, you asked a question about will they be working. So, so yes, they could certainly collaborate. Um, they're not, when you say "part of," I would say they would be collaborating with.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Mari.
Um, I had a question about the national data. I saw your, um, impact on the local graduation rates of the Boston schools that you shared with us. But I was wondering, since you, you had a 96 or 97% overlap with the 50, the, the districts that have 50% non-graduates, um, do you have numbers on how your program has impacted those numbers, those graduation rates?
Um, we do. I don't have them in front of me, because we pulled them out side-by-side, but I'd be happy to share them tomorrow when I get back to the office with the group.
Thanks very much.
Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome. I'm very excited, uh, as a former AmeriCorps member. I'm going to turn off my video. I'm having technical difficulties, so just bear with me. Can you hear me now?
Better.
Okay. Okay. Um, as a former AmeriCorps member, I'm very excited to have you onboard. And I was just curious how your plan and how your model may have changed as we come back from COVID in a year where so many of our students were entirely remote. I think that's one of the um, most challenging is the, you know, and it's been said a million different ways, but we all went through this together, but you know, it was a different storm for everybody. So how has that changed your um, planning for your model? Or is it just really gonna be based on the school? Have you thought about that yet? Or when Boston Public Schools came back last year, did you see any additional needs that we might anticipate here?
Thank you for the question. That's a great question. Um, I'll let Marika get into some of the detail. Um, how they, she's addressing with her team and Courtney's addressing with his team specifically in the classrooms. There is some data that we have that shows that having uh, an AmeriCorps member in your classroom and building those strong relationships is equivalent to making almost one-year academic gains. And so really working with our AmeriCorps members this year to lean in hard on those relationships of developing with students um, and teachers and families as well. But Marika, do you want to take a minute and talk about what specific changes we've made from last year to this year?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you so much Nancy. Um, I do want to double down on what Nancy just said. Um, in meeting with principals, they've highlighted for us that relationships are going to be super important. And recognizing where students are at as they're entering the building is going to be key for core members. Um, in terms of changes to our model, I think it has just increased our um, need to be collaborative with partners. Um, we're asking very strategic questions about where do you want core members to be serving? Which classrooms are the best classrooms for them to be in right now? And how can we meet the needs of what um, your overarching goals are for the year? So really diving into that with principals now. Um, Courtney and I have had at least one, in many cases, two meetings with uh, school administrations already. Um, and I have some people who are already in the schools. They're already talking about what does this look like? And how do we make sure we're not um, falling back on the routine before the pandemic? That may have been part of our model, but really adjusting and really addressing the needs. Um, I talked a little bit about this in the PowerPoint, but it's important for us to recognize that no two schools are the same. And so like, being mindful of that and going into our partnerships with that in mind um, has led us to a space where we can be open to collaboration and we can really meet those needs. Um, Courtney, I don't know if you would add anything in terms of things that your teams are doing that might look a little bit different?
Yeah, man, it's honestly, everything that Marika said, I'm on it as well, you know? Um, Marika and I serve on the same team, both being impact directors. Also, fun fact, we're both from Texas. Know what I'm saying? I always have to find a way to name it. And that's my way of bringing that in. Shout out to Texas. But we love Boston. We're here. All right. Um, but one thing I want to kind of name is that the whole goal is kind of meeting students and meeting teachers and meeting schools where they're at. That is our goal, right? Um, to kind of support just loss of learning and all the other things. And there's one person I want to kind of like elevate and name. I, I mentioned it a little bit in the um, in, in the presentation when it comes to instructional coaches. But they are a key piece that we have as well and a key resource. And these are all individuals that was once like teachers as well, supporting our AmeriCorps members um, inside the classroom as well by giving them tutoring and like mentoring, like skills and things of that nature. But I'm talking about somebody else's team. I can, um, we have Carrie Baldwin, that's, that's on the call right now, who is um, over just our instructional coaches. And maybe she can speak, um, if she feels so comfortable to, a little bit more about like what that looks like to kind of give you a little bit of aspect of how we're kind of thinking about supporting our AmeriCorps members as they're supporting these students um, that may have had different various versions of like um, service last year and things of that nature. So Carrie, if you feel comfortable speaking, I, I just came out of nowhere and may have sent your name for it.
No, I appreciate it. My uh, two-year-old may bust in the room in any moment. Um, I see a little bit uh, above like this. Uh, yes, but my name is Carrie Baldwin and I am the director of the instruction coaching team uh, here at City Year Greater Boston. And Wesley Pierre is actually joining us on Facebook Live. Um, so she's not able to, to jump in right now. She's, she is the instructional coach for Everett. Um, so she's instructional coach for Everett, uh, who will be supporting all five schools. And we are all former teachers with um, a range of somewhere between ten and fifteen years teaching experience. Uh, we all coached for City Year um, Greater Boston. And each core member will actually have um, a minimum of seven observation and coaching sessions this year um, with an instructional coach or with their impact manager or team leader. Um, so in a typical year, um, we go in and we observe in classrooms, we observe tutoring sessions um, and various other um, one-on-one and small group settings. Uh, and then we sat down, sit down and have a coaching session with the core member um, to share what we saw, come up with an action step together. And it's really based on, based on best practices from when we were all teachers and observed by our principals and our directors of curriculum and other folks. So Wesley Pierre is the um, instructional coach for Everett. Um, but we work with a team of instructional coaches and we lead academic trainings and social emotional learning trainings for uh, the core members. And we just had three today um, on uh, building student relationships, building teacher partnerships. Um, and uh, some introduction to the observation coach. So we are super excited and we are here as another resource um, for core members.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Thank you so much, Carrie. I know I just brought you in, but thank you so much for that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, and, and thank you folks from City Year. I've known this organization for a long time. In fact, I've worked uh, with AmeriCorps members uh, through a state program that we, that we had in an office that I used to lead for the state. Um, where AmeriCorps members were put into uh, work in immigrant and refugee uh, organizations, serving in for a year. Uh, so I've been to City Year uh, several times and you, you guys do amazing work. I'm really glad to see uh, you uh, coming to Everett. How many members will be uh, in our schools? Or how many members are? Because I know you, you listed the number of schools. Are there uh, two members uh, per school or what's the total number right now? Perhaps the superintendent can answer that.
Sure. So there's uh, a team of forty. Um, so at each of the five schools, we have a team of eight. Um, and also with one of uh, the impact directors, so forty-one in total.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Barrows?
No, thanks.
Okay, uh, his honor, the mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say um, that I am, I'm excited um, to have you in the city. Prior to the pandemic, I had been meeting with big brother, big sister on their mentor, mentorship program. And um, that is something that I think that uh, our children definitely need um, is uh, some mentors in their life. And um, we're eight at a school. It's definitely a great start. And we hope to build that up. Um, I've had interactions with many kids and actually one prior to the pandemic when we were doing the lunch, school lunch visits. And very happy kid, having a great conversation, and then it got really deep. And I saw a lot of sadness there in the kid, uh, nothing at home. Um, you know, no real mentor at home and um, that sparked my interest in talking to big brother, big sister. And um, so I'm happy that um, that you guys are here. Um, because sometimes it takes like a third party to really just kind of do that for us, you know? Bringing an organization in to help us with some of those, uh, some of those needs. And I definitely want to be involved, so please reach out to me. Um, I just want to shout out to Carrie, uh, balancing a two-year-old and doing this meeting. So thank you, Carrie, for that. Um, definitely looking forward to meeting Courtney also. And I'm also really excited, I know this is off topic, but the box program, that was something that um, I had brought into the schools. If you all remember years ago, um, and I, you know, I always, physical education is something that's very near and dear to me. And getting our kids to work out in the morning before school, it's definitely get that anxiety out of them and gets them to be able to sit down and learn. So I'm really excited, uh, to be honest with you, um, all these different programs and, and, and sitting here and listening to your presentation. So I wish you guys the best of luck and look forward to working with you all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any, any other members? Uh, if I may, from the chair, um, just a couple of things. So, you know, I, I just, um, I heard a lot about opportunity. And one of the things that I think there's a great opportunity, besides just meeting the needs of the students, is you talked about alumni support. And I think that's an area of opportunity and an area of growth for this community because, you know, I believe it's uh, something that we can do better. Um, you know, uh, we do have a lot of successful people um, out, you know, in the world that came from Everett. Um, doing all kinds of great things, you know, whether a laborer or, or a lawyer or a teacher or whatever. But um, you know, I think we gotta entice them back and tell them the Everett story because there's something good going on here. How can you help us do that?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the question. Um, so when we, for clarification, when we talk about alumni, we talk about our core members who have gone through the program. But a really interesting approach that we started three years ago in Boston that we would love to see expand to a larger portion of our core is the teacher fellowship program. So AmeriCorps members come in, they serve one year in a school. Then they serve a second year in a school. At the same time, they're taking night classes with a partnership at UMass Boston and getting their teaching, their master's in education and their teaching certificate. So at the end of the third year, they're ready and essentially, you know how many teachers you hired this year? They're guaranteed a position inside Boston Public Schools, having come through the program. And combined with the Pell Grant that they get, the education stipend they get from serving with City Year and some other funding that we're putting together, it's close to free for them. Um, and so then they stay in the community and work in our schools. So that's a program they're piloting. We've got, we had forty people apply for ten positions for this school year. And we hope to double the size of it next year and then continue to grow it. So that's a way, right, that we can keep people in our community. Also, the program has attracted a lot of attention from our other twenty-eight sites. So we have people from others, other cities and states that want to come to Boston to participate in this program.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that on the alumni. And my last question is uh, measurement. How do we measure and when? Is there a cycle? Is there a cadence? Um, how do you share what's going on, um, you know, with the, the administration, the building leader and also us?
I don't, but I'm superintendent, you want to address, um, we have a data share, we share, we have a data sharing agreement. Um, so we track attendance. Go, go ahead.
Right. And so we will also be utilizing our own internal assessments and uh, identifying the students who are um, with our City Year fellows uh, so that we can measure growth and we can see how we are faring. So it will be a combination of our own, oh, I'm sorry, our, our own internal assessments and their um, City Year's data um, data tools as well.
Thank you. Um, I have no other questions. Does anybody else?
Oh, and do you mind? And I just checked back. Sorry. I just wanted to clarify something. It is actually um, one site director per school and two impact directors oversee all five of the schools. Sorry, I just wanted to check and make sure I got that right. So it's actually forty-seven individuals from City Year.
Okay, and uh, Mr. Dimmer, is, has anybody who has not spoken yet would like to speak? Okay, just as a courtesy, uh.
Mr. Chairman, just on your point with the alumni, uh, that is something big brother and big sister actually do with cities and um, kids in school. So I'd love to talk to you all about that and, you know, um, look into that again. Um, so maybe we can talk to them in the future. Um, that's, it's actually a free program. Um, so just a, it's a great point you made.
And, and, and just as an example, you know, talking about, you know, Everett people have gone out into the workplace. Um, I've got a, a, a classmate of mine who's, who does that to UMass uh, Lowell. He did at UMass Amherst, he did at Yale. Um, he's even written books about it. You know, maybe next year when I get more free time, that's something I can focus on with you. Thank you. Um, so ladies and gentlemen, everybody's asked their questions. Um, I would entertain a motion to um, excuse the, the guests, both uh, here and online, but a customary thanks.
So.
Most men and second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you, your staff, and I will look forward to seeing you more.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. It's a pleasure. All right. So with that, um, we can move on to item number three, please.
Uh, thank you so much. And I just want to thank City Year Two uh, for being here. I was actually also a core member, my, an AmeriCorps member and a, a previous big sister as well. Uh, so I've been part of both of those programs and uh, that's actually how I got my pre, uh, preschool teaching certification that has since lapsed. Uh, but it was definitely a great way to, to start um, exploring the teaching field and get that feedback from my site directors who uh, then supported me in, in getting those certifications. So I do think it's a great way to build pipelines for our, our own community members and our own alumni. So thank you guys so much. So item number three is to request authorization to sign the contract for after-school programming. So this item was introduced at last week's school committee meeting, at which point we were asked to send along the rating sheets, which we did. Uh, we're looking forward to next steps to get our after-school programming up and running.
I'm.
Uh, Ms. Sunny?
Thank you. Um, I noticed on the rating, there was only, um, there were one point away. Um, what was the cost factor between the two of them um, for the after-school program, between the two of them?
Meaning what is the cost sharing or, or how much? So we are actually not allowed to see the price proposal for the other bidders. We can only see the price proposal for the bidder that we choose based on the, um, based on the rubric. So for an RFP, you're not choosing based on cost, you're choosing based on the quality of the programming.
Okay, so it's not cost factor, it's more on quality of the work?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Barrows?
I was just gonna make a motion to uh, approve the request to sign the contract for after-school program.
Second.
Okay, so uh, motion has been made a second to approve the signing of the contract. We have a motion in, in front of us and with that, I will open up um, for further debate and questioning. Is there anybody I'd like to recognize? Ms. Cadella?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prior to voting this evening, I know, I don't really have personal preferences because I don't have anything to care to, but.
You're good. You're not muted.
I believe you are now. You are now.
Now I am?
Yeah.
Do you do that, Mr. Chairman? No, joking. Um, so I have, I didn't, didn't know of this. I know this other after-school program. The only one I've ever known has been the FKO that's been here for several years. And while this was all going on, I did receive several calls and also ran into several people at the schools questioning why we would do this. And I explained the process and how it was rated and that. I don't know whether that information is public, like that we received the scoring on the rubric. So I wouldn't share it with anybody unless I knew. And I'm not sure that people would understand it, reading through it like they might. Uh, so that's one of my questions, is that public information after we've voted on this? Would that information be public if somebody did want to see it?
Um, from the chair, it's, it's a public bid.
Okay.
As you saw from the content that we got from the city solicitor, when the question raised about the previous contract, you know, there's a hundred pages of documentation, this would be included in it. So yes, uh, I would say, unless there's someone that disagrees with me, the rubric uh, would be um.
Would be public.
Public information.
Okay, thank you. So I apologize to, you know, for the people that are upset because they're very used to having FKO, very happy with FKO, but at this point, uh, we have to move on. We need an after-school program, as we all know. And, you know, as Ms. Sunny said, there was a one-point difference. And for whatever that reason is, then we're just gonna have to move forward this evening. But thank you for letting me speak on that.
Okay, you're welcome.
Uh, you're on mute.
Um, before I recognize Ms. Sunny, is there anybody who hasn't spoken on the matter would like to speak? Seeing none, Ms. Sunny?
Thank you. I throw you to the chair to um. Thank you. I throw you to the chair, to, um, Madam Superintendent. Um, the cost factor, um, is that calculated by, um, family salary and how that comes up with the cost for them, for the programs?
Yes, so there is a sliding scale.
There's sliding scale, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any, uh, any other questions or comments? Um, seeing none, uh, we have one motion in, in front of us and that's to approve, um, the, uh, actually to authorize the superintendent to sign the after-school program, um, with, um, the company, which is Alphabet's. So with that, I will ask for a roll call vote, please. I'm sorry? Yes, Ms. Cadello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize because thinking about what I just said, I, I acted like there was no other choice. And I know people are already enrolled and want to stay with FKO. So in reality, they still are here and they still are servicing Everett students. And that's a choice to be made by families.
And, and that's, that's a good point because, you know, families need more choices and they have that. So. Thank you for mentioning that. Roll call vote, please. Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, ten in affirmative? A jack, I'm at ten in the affirmative, zero negative, uh, you have approved authorization to sign the contract. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number four is a request approval of supplement, the supplemental programming RFP. So after our last, last meeting, our next step was for us to work with the city of Everett to determine if this was an appropriate procurement process. As a result of that discussion, um, we did, uh, change the language of the RFP to more clearly explain the difference between this and the after-school programming, um, especially for those who may not be accustomed to or familiar with the term supplemental services and programming as it relates to education. Uh, so we made changes to make it very, uh, much more clear. Uh, we resent it to the city and the, and this body. I believe they also had some further comments about it. We also, uh, changed the title of it to be Business and Community Partnerships, uh, RFP. Uh, because that is specifically what it is built for, is building the partnerships that we've had with our community-based organizations, local businesses, nonprofit organizations, in order to create these extra above and beyond opportunities for our students. And that doesn't include, for example, necessarily after-school regular childcare, doesn't include snack. And, and covers all grades K to twelve versus just grades K to five.
Uh, Mr. Di Maria, Ms. Di Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I'm glad to see that we had definitely changed the, the title to the, uh, program. So, um, when I look at, um, Alphabet, is it Alphabet, Alphabet best? Alphabet best, um, I, I see, I feel that the same, a lot of the same programming here that's in this bid. Uh, but then when you say social service organizations, then I'm like, that excites me. Because I mean, like, like the Everett Haitian Community Center doing a French class, but I just, um, and I, I, I do have, uh, the procurement officer here with us and the assistant city solicitor. Because when you look at Alphabet's, uh, proposal, they talk about, you know, uh, fitness games from the National Coaching Academy. This has coaching, it talks about drama and languages and, uh, STEM and, and that, that's actually also in the original bid. Um, so that's, that's kind of why I just was a little, um, concerned the last meeting. As you all know, I'm definitely a proponent of after-school programming. I think it's very important that we help our working families and keep our kids out of trouble, uh, which is the biggest thing, right? And keep, give them enough programming and mo, as much support as possible. So that, that, that's my issue and I don't, um, I still don't feel comfortable. Um, a, a, and I don't know if you all feel comfortable, we do have the procurement officer here and the assistant city solicitor. They, I think, uh, I believe have still some concerns. Um, but if they were to say that, um, this is good, then I'm good. Um, I just don't want to, um, be in a situation where we're paying a vendor, uh, to do all these services and then we're bringing another vendor in to do the same service and paying them also. Um, but I'm all for paying vendors to do, to do after-school programming as long as we're not being duplicative. And I feel there's a lot of duplication, so.
If I could just say one thing from the chair, um, this request for, uh, business and community partnerships, this is for all students, not just students who are part of what will be the Alphabet's program. So that's probably one of the major differences. Valid point still, uh, Mr. Di Maria. And can I have, uh, Ms. Lambert?
So having reviewed the changes in the language, I thought it was much more clear and I, you know, and I appreciate the collaboration with the administration and the city in, uh, adapting that because I think it just eliminates any confusion. Um, you know, I know multiple city partners that are excited. They're excited when they heard about this. You know, whether it be, um, and I'm not speaking for any particular, but Everett Community Growers has some great ideas they're looking forward to. Uh, the Everett Haitian Community Center, just what they did with their heritage language program. So this is, this is outside of caretaking. This is more opportunity building for our students. And with that, and with the changes, I'm, I'm very comfortable making a motion to approve the, um, RFP for the Business and Community Engagement RFP.
And I'll second.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion before us, um, to approve, um, the RFP. And again, it's, it's an RFP only at this point too, right? So this is just a commitment to go out, uh, to quote, it's not a commitment to engage. So there's still an opportunity to revisit, things should arise. Any other questions or concerns? Ms. Murray, please.
I just wanted to say that I understand where Mayor Di Maria's, um, confusion, uh, concern comes from. But I do think it's important to reiterate the fact that only the children that are in the after-school Alphabet's program are gonna have access to the things that you're seeing as duplicates versus all kids being able to take, say, a drama class. Yes, Alphabet's may provide, say, drama for the kids that are in Alphabet's. But any kid that's not in an after-school program, either because they're not signed up for it or because they're in grades six through twelve, wouldn't have access to that because they are not being serviced by Alphabet's. So I think that that's, while it's true that it, that it may be a similar service, it's to a different population, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to make sure that.
Let me, uh, address anybody who has not spoken on the matter first. Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to give one example of something like this that happened in the past when I was the Director of the Office for Refugees and Immigrants, uh, under Governor Patrick. During that time, as our country, you'll see now, uh, an influx of refugees from Afghanistan. During that time when I was leading the office, we had, um, also an influx of kids coming from, unaccompanied minors coming from El Salvador, um, Guatemala, Honduras. That were, uh, the federal government gave funding, uh, to the state and the state was providing funding to schools, uh, to help with a specific program for those kids. Um, so during that time, as I stayed office, I reached out to school districts. And there are certain school districts who were not able to provide the service because they had one contract already, uh, one RFP, one contract with a, um, provider. So there was no possibility of an additional program going through a local community-based organizations to provide service for that, uh, amount of kids who are coming because there was no such thing as an additional service. So districts who had this were able to partner with, uh, our state office during that time and we were able to partner and fund local organizations who then partner with the school districts. It is a little complicated, uh, but it's just one example of how this has worked in the past. And that's how I would see this working. I'm not giving examples saying that this is going to be for kids coming from Afghanistan. Has nothing to do with that. I'm just giving one example of my experience with such, uh, uh, type of RFP uh, in the past when we had, uh, which was mid-year, uh, this, you know, impact that we are not expecting as a school district. Just want to give this example. So thank you.
Anybody else who's not spoken on the matter yet? Me, Di Maria.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I feel a lot better this evening than I did last week or two weeks ago. I felt like it was last week. Was it last week? It was, it was last week, right? Um, I feel a lot better, uh, with the, with the updated, um, uh, change. Um, and I do know we're offering this also to our high school students where we don't have a FKO in the high school, correct? All right? And I don't know if, um, after-school programming, does, does, do we have after-school program on vacation weeks? We don't, right? But this now will have, this will supplement after-school programming for vacation weeks, correct? Like, uh, Easter break and holiday breaks?
Depending on who bids, yes.
Okay, depending on who bids.
But yeah.
And I love the fact, I mean, as you all know, I'm a huge proponent of the community gardens, the community growers and the community farm. And teaching kids how to grow vegetables and make healthy snacks. If that's something that the community growers are gonna put together, which I, I think they probably will be, um, that's something I think is gonna be great for our kids to learn how to, uh, vegetable garden, right? How to grow a vegetable garden and, uh, can do that in a container, right? So, uh, I'm, I'm excited to see that there will be some, when it says Business and Community Partnership Program, that there'll be some of these, uh, social service organizations like, that work with us every day, working in our schools. So, um, that, I want to thank, uh, I know Anu worked with Robert on this. I want to thank Anu for, uh, for making these changes. And, uh, thank you all for, uh, putting this, um, on the calendar tonight. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments, uh, if I can from the chair before we take a vote? Um, a while back, I took a training and, uh, Ms. Lambert was on the training. And, um, the professional, and I don't know their name, um, said, gave us his definition of equality versus equity. Equality was every kid has a pair of shoes. Um, equity was every kid has a pair of shoes that fits. So it's not my comment, that's the professional. So my point is, we had, you know, what we've done in the last fifteen minutes, we, we're offering families more places to buy their shoes. Whether they continue with FKO, whether they, they come onboard at, um, Alphabet's or they participate in this, uh, supplemental program. We're gonna be able to provide kids with more pairs of shoes that fit. So, um, you've accomplished a lot and like I said in the last fifteen minutes. So with that, um, uh, I'll ask for a voice vote, please. Motion is made in second of favorable action, can I have a vote, voice vote? Because I know everybody wants to be counted on this one. Yes.
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 Yes, ten in the affirmative, zero the negative, you have approved, uh, the request to go out to, uh, bid for supplemental, uh, programming. Uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Number five, please.
Thank you so much and thank you so much again to the city and to all of the, uh, the city officials who supported us in, in making the appropriate changes. Item number five is an update as it relates to the test and stay program. Um, as mentioned previously, the purpose of this testing program is to allow students who, staff and students who are identified as close contacts of people who have contracted COVID-19 to remain in class so long as they produce a negative test result each day for five days following exposure. This is important because of so many reasons, uh, such as the ability to continue in-person instruction, maintaining their relationships with teachers, access to school-based services such as food and other supports. And as you know, since we are not providing a remote learning option for students who are going to be sent home, because they were close contact and not necessarily because they are positive, uh, they will be missing out on that instruction. Also, uh, it is important to note that this program is completely funded by D E S I. Um, and I would like to respectfully request to bring forwards Sabrina Ferricano, who I think that's it, right? Uh, who will be providing us with information on the timeline for us to begin this testing, the capacity of the testing and the groups that, that will be administering the testing.
I'll make a motion to bring Sabrina.
Second.
Will that be remotely? Oh, hi, sorry. Um, okay, most of the men is seconded to bring forward, uh, uh, Ms. Sabrina, um, Ferricano. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Um, if you could please come forward?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, so as the superintendent had mentioned, um, this program, the test and stay program and also the binex now, um, program for individuals who are symptomatic is fully funded by, um, D E S I and D P H. Um, so I kind of just want to give a little bit of a timeline of the work that we have been doing to implement this, um, program over the past month. Um, back, um, in the beginning of August, we did meet with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, um, in regards to back-to-school protocol and how that will look like in the beginning, um, school year. Um, as of August fourth, um, we had that meeting, we were able to just discuss protocols um, and also have the city solicitor, um, reach out to the, um, nurses' union to, um, begin to, um, have, um, speaking directions of how testing was going to go. As of August eleventh, that is when D E S I had, um, implemented their twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two protocols, um, with explaining that there will be a testing option. Um, as of August eighteenth, we did get, um, the application for the testing, um, the test and stay and the binex now. I did submit the application on behalf of the, um, behalf of the Everett Public Schools. That was then, um, accepted as of August twenty-ninth. Um, that is when D E S I had approved, um, Everett as being able to provide these tests. Um, as of September sixth, um, the mayor's office and myself, we had reached out to Cataldo um, because we were reaching out to both D E S I and D P H and not hearing anything back with, we were approved, but what our next steps were. Um, I also reached out to D P H to kind of accelerate what that timeline is. Um, and then today we also met with, um, the city and Cataldo met in regards to having, having Cataldo be the main, um, individuals that perform the test on behalf of the state. Um, C I C Health Center is the contracted, um, provider through the state, but Cataldo also works with C I C. So we are working very diligently on this and we're trying to get this up and running as, as soon as possible to ensure that students and, um, close contacts can stay in the buildings.
Ma'am Di Maria?
I, I just want to add that what we have, um, tried to reach out to the nurses' union. Uh, we've made three attempts, um, via, uh, email, I believe. And, uh, we had made one, uh, phone call attempt, um, to try to bargain with the nurses. Um, and, um, I know, Sabrina, we will hopefully, um, get word from the state if they're gonna allow us, well, I think, I think we're gonna bring Cataldo in. Is, is, is Cataldo committed to coming in and then we're gonna, can you just talk a little bit, expand upon that? When do you expect him to start?
Yep, so, um, based off of the, um, conversation, um, this afternoon, they are able to start. Yep, so um based off of the um conversation um this afternoon, they are able to start as soon as possible. Um, I did have to reach out to CIC Health, DPH, and DESI requesting that we would like Cataldo to be um our main provider. They, we have a working relationship with them in the community, and they did provide testing, um pool testing at the end of last year. So it would be a very, a great working relationship, and we haven't received any communication from CIC Health of who our provider would be. So we're requesting that it be Cataldo so that we can implement this as as soon as possible.
So we plan on bringing Cataldo in as early as?
So they're able, they're as early as tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, we just have to get the approval from CIC, DESI, and DPH um because it is um
To pay them.
To pay them, correct.
We will, but we will pay in the meantime.
In the meantime.
Right. And we also just want to let people know also that the testing center at River Green is going to be, it's open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM uh six days a week and up until October, and then we'll probably move that indoors. Um, so families still have that option if they're out of school, their child is symptomatic. After 2:30, kid comes home, so we still want to, and hopefully we can push that out different languages that that's still available 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, correct? 7:00 AM?
Correct, Monday, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, 12 to 6.
Thank you. Thank you, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just, hold on a second. Uh, Ms. Cadell, did you have your hand up?
I did, but I'll wait and refer to the superintendent if she'd like to speak. She may answer my question.
I wasn't, I was actually going to ask Sabrina a question. You could.
One of my questions is, honestly, I don't know what the acronym CIC stands for, and I would like to understand what that is. I know it has to do with something with disease control or infection control, but I really don't know what it is. Maybe uh I can refer to
Mr. Faracano?
Faracano.
Yes, so um CIC Health is their actual name. Um, they are contracted through DPH. Um, they had um, they had won the bid for the DESI um DPH um s- school testing grant. So they're, they're called CIC Health.
CIC Health, thank you, thank you, thank you. And my other question is, um, I guess this would be to Ms. Serena as well. Will Cataldo be in our schools or will they have set up something, either the ambulance or a test outside of our facilities?
So so ideally, they would be inside the schools. Um, they would be able to test any individuals that are a close contact. So that test and stay model, saying if a student does become exposed to another student or staff in the in the school, they would be able to stay in school and get tested. If they're, if they test negative, they're can, they can continue to stay in school and get tested every day for five days from their exposure. And then if they're symptomatic, they would also be able to be tested in school. So the idea, the idea is to try to keep as many students in school um as mu- as much as possible.
Thank you. One more question. She may have said it, and I may have missed it because I was taking notes, but how long did the results take from the rapid test?
Um, so it's uh binex now rapid test, 15 minutes.
That's it, okay.
Results in 15 minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Faracano, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Superintendent?
So I just had a question, Sabrina, if you wouldn't mind clarifying the difference between the test and state, when you test in school versus families who test outside of school, who go to a testing facility outside of schools? Because I do believe that there is a distinction on who can stay in school and who can't, depending on where the test was given.
So yes, so if um if a student was exposed in school, they're able to stay in school and get the the rapid test, which is the binex now test. If they go outside and if they go to like River Green, for example, and they receive a positive test, they would, they would still have to remain out of school if they, if they received a positive test. Does that answer?
And if they received a negative test, they could come back even without testing every day for five days?
So if they're considered a close contact, they would still, they could get tested after, say if they find out after school, um and they want to go and test, they can test after school, but they would then subsequently have to test until day five.
Okay, thank you, uh Ms. Murray.
So this is just a pragmatic question. Will the Cataldo employees that are in our schools be coree checked, and is that part of their agreement with us?
That I'm, I'm not sure of, I'm not in regards to the testing that was done back in April. Um, I know that was also DESI approved, and I I believe they they were quarried if I'm, I I don't want to speak out of turn.
But we also had others who were doing the testing back then as well, who were either employees of ours. Uh, because again, we were doing pool testing, which doesn't have to be administered by a sort of, by a nurse. Um, so th- these are greater restrictions, which is why it it is a slightly different process. And the reason I wanted to make the distinction of the in-school and out-of-school testing is because most likely even a student is then going to just wait, which has been the process up until now, wait till the fifth day. After being a close contact, you're going to wait until the fifth day for a test outside of school. Um, because you're not going to have the, unless unless it is a family that's going to go and get five tests at River Green over and over. So the benefit of having the test and stay program is so that we can make sure students actually can stay. Otherwise, they may still have to be out of school.
Okay, thank you, uh Ms. Sunny.
Thank you, um, Ms., uh, to the Madam Superintendent. Um, the children that are getting sent home, are they considered absent from the school?
So yes, that is, um, we have received, uh, because I know that this was a question that Ms. Lambert has asked, had asked before. And right now, DESI does say that they are going to be looking at the data to see if this decision may change. But currently, yes, if a student is sent home, because we are not providing a remote option and teachers are not streaming their instructions, since we're fully in person, the student would be considered absent.
My next question, yeah, my next question was going to ask is if they're allowed to be, make up work, uh be able to get sent home or someone bringing it to them so they don't fall behind.
Absolutely, so just like any other absence, we would of course allow them to make up work. Um, however, you know, any student missing five days of work, especially if they are asymptomatic and going to be negative on the fifth day, it's definitely going to come at an impact to them, which is why we want to get this program up and running as quickly as possible.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions of our guests? Uh, anybody else that has not asked a question yet? Okay, Ms. Cadell, I recognize you.
It's not a question, actually, from Ms. Faracano. I just want to, for clarity, not doing apples and oranges here. What we have at River Green is a testing site for all, anytime that they're open. Our students, if they have any symptoms at school or have been exposed at school, we would be doing it there. I hope I didn't make the confusion when I asked the question, would Cataldo be inside or outside? I didn't mean that we would send them to Cataldo up on Broadway. I meant like set up a specific area at our schools. And I just, like a tent, like some places do. I know where I've had it at uh Marlow's, wait, not Marlow's, Springfield, um, Lawrence Memorial, they have a drive-through tent that you, you know, go to. So I I didn't know if we would have a space for them in the schools on a daily basis or if they would be outside, but it just sounds like they will be in the schools. And then River Green is for everything else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And 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 the testing in the schools will be for students and staff.
Uh, excuse me, and I also had asked Mr. Mayor because it wasn't going to be at the rec center. It would seem to be a very convenient location for most people in the city. And now it's been moved or it's being moved, and it's not an easy place to get to. And I would like to refer to the mayor on this, because I don't want to speak his words. I would like him to answer that question if people, since we're on the subject of testing, and we all know we need it every so often, that if he could explain how we can accommodate people who don't drive to go to the testing site now. Do you mind, Mr., if my colleagues would indulge me on that, if we could ask the mayor that question?
Your Honor, would you like to address that?
Thank you.
Or Ms. Faracano?
So I I, and it is sometimes a challenge, sometimes with the um either school, schoolchildren. It is a very well-attended site. Um, we have been tracking numbers um both inside um from the rec center and um outside at River Green, and those numbers have been steady. There hasn't been a significant drop in in numbers. Um, I know that once the weather starts changing and starts getting colder, we will have to um think about moving it back inside. Um, but as of right now, we haven't seen a decrease in the amount of testing that they do want to on a daily basis.
Okay.
Um, can I add to that? So um as we know, uh, week ago last Monday, um Governor Baker and uh Secretary Isner were at Everett to talk about the vaccinations, right? So DESI has set a 80% threshold for vaccinations. And what they showed that day was between 16 and 19-year-olds, we have a 71% rate. And we have between 12 and 15, and correct if I'm I'm wrong, we have a 74% vaccination rate. And you know, they were here to highlight how well we're doing as a community as far as getting the, getting the public vaccinated. Um, because we're that close, uh, even with all the challenges that we have, or this logistics, you know, and other things, that we got a pretty relate, pretty high rate in accordance to the 80%. So I would trust that as um, you know, things change, weather changes, um, the administration will be nimble and provide um spots to get vaccinated that would help accommodate more people, so. Okay, any other questions of our guests?
Do you have a question, thanks?
Second. Uh, motion made in second until uh, is I guess, a question, thanks, all those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Faracano, for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I don't think there's a motion in order, though, it's just for informational purposes. Okay, so with that, we'll close on number five and move on to the next um item on the calendar, please, number six.
Item number six is to request approval of the superintendent's evaluation, which is my evaluation. Um, I just wanted to thank the entire school committee for their thoughtful feedback, which I will be using to inform my goals and practices for this upcoming year. Um, I think that evaluations are incredibly important at all levels of the school system in order to ensure accountability as well as continuous learning and improvement for each and every one of us. Uh, thus rightfully so, this is a process that should begin with me. Um, and I do want the body to rest assured um that, as I did last year, I will continue to strive towards achieving exemplary performances, exemplary performance ratings next year, using your feedback as my guide.
Um, so I want to make a motion to open up debate.
Move for favorable action?
Second. Okay, so motion has been moved uh for favorable action to approve the superintendent's evaluation. Any questions or comments from the uh, from the body? Okay, um, seeing none. Uh, and just to let the the public know that we went this evaluation process, which started a little over a year ago, uh was completed um with input from each member, uh including the mayor as the new vote, newest voting member. And also too, we had input uh for Donna Lewis, the rep, who was not part of the uh accumulative rating in the end. You know, there are, there are four bo- uh, four categories, uh unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, exemplary. The superintendent was rated proficient um by this body. So with that, um, can I have a roll call vote on approving and accepting the superintendent's evaluation?
Day?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sunny?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, standing in the affirmative, zero the negative, uh, you have approved the superintendent's evaluation. Thank you all for helping the process. Next item, please.
Item number seven is a request from Athletics Director Tammy Turner for approval for eighth-grade waivers for the following sports, field hockey, ice hockey, and baseball. Our parti- our participant numbers have been down in these sports, especially after COVID. Um, so the eighth graders would be playing at the youngest level we offer at EHS, meaning freshmen or junior varsity when applicable.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman?
Second, second.
Uh, motion made in second for favorable action to grant eighth-grade waivers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, you have approved the waivers. Next item, please.
Item number eight is a request for approval for the Everett Crimson Tide Pop Warner to use the Parlin School Gymnasium during the months of September, October, November, and December for cheerleading practice. This request is for Brian Diamond, president of the Everett Crimson Tide Pop Warner. We have checked with Mr. Lynch, the principal, um, and Ms. Turner, the athletic director, to ensure that there are no conflicts with any of our school programs at this time.
Beautiful.
Favorable action on the order?
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Motion made in favorable action and has been seconded to request the, provide uh uh the Crimson Tide Pop Warner with use of the Parlin School, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved, you have approved.
Thank you. And finally, item number nine is request by the Everett Recreation Department for the use of school gymnasiums on Tuesday and Thursday evenings from 4:30 PM to 8:30 PM, and Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM from September 21st, 2021 to approximately November 20th of this tw- of 2021. This request is from Mike Di Pietro. Uh, we have done this in the past, and we will ensure that the use of our gymnasiums by the recreation department does not interfere with any school programs. So we'll make sure that the the um schedules align, just like the uh, the the Pop Warner. Um, the gymna- gymnasium will be used, uh, to be used will be determined by Mr. Braun in consult, in consultation with building principals, depending on availability.
Favorable action on the order?
Second, oh, second.
Motion made in seconded uh to grant approval to the Everett Recreation Department. Any questions, comments, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have approved, thank you.
Thank you. Roman numeral six is items submitted by school committee members. And uh the first one is, or the only one, is the MASC online webinar for superintendent evaluation, Making the Most of the Opportunity, which is at September 17th, 2021 at 12:00 PM. And this was submitted by Chairman Parker.
Okay, uh, if I can hear from the chair, thank you. Uh, this for informational purposes only. Uh, tonight, you approved the superintendent's evaluation. Uh, the process for the next evaluation started right after you voted. So I wanted to bring to your attention that this webinar is being offered by MASC. Um, I know it can be a tough time um to attend at a, to a noon meeting, but they do archive some meetings on their website, so you can review it. You know, I I have to thank Ms. Lambert and Ms. Murray, especially Ms. Murray, who took the lead on this as far as building, um, you know, the rubric. You know, for those of us who have not done this type of evaluation, she has as an educator, like it could be a pretty daunting process. But with your approval tonight, you built a baseline of what to compare the next evaluation against. So therefore, when you're looking at what needs to be improved and or was proficient, looking at what you just approved uh tonight. So at some point, um, even though she's already shared her goals uh for the share with her entry report, I believe there'll be some formal presentation and acceptance. And at that point, you start to need to think uh in terms of the actual evaluation as far as what will the standards be and what will the indicators be? So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'd be remiss also if I didn't thank uh the assistance of Mary Burke for the Mass Association of School Superintendents and Dorothy Presser for the Mass Association of School Committees, who's the subject matter expert on uh the evaluation process. The evaluation process was built between MASC, MAS, and the DESE. And Dorothy was probably on all of our meetings uh remotely, providing us guidelines actually step by step. And uh, so with that, um, enough, uh, and we can move on. And uh, please, I can't thank you enough uh for taking part in this. we can move on. And please, I can't thank you enough for taking part in this, you know, the superintendent evaluation, which we haven't done in a long time, that was really, really, really done by the body as a whole. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, next, communication in place on file? Okay, motion is made in second to accept the communication have placed on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you. So we have no subcommittee reports for this evening. So Roman numeral eight is bills and payrolls.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $97,076.45.
Second motion. Okay, motion has been made in second to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $97,076.45. All those in favor, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? You have approved.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $97,076.45.
I'll second.
The motion. Okay, motion has been made in second to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $97,076.45. And if we get a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Avrize?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Ten in affirmative, motion carries. And the next item, please, item 12.
So Roman numeral 12 is matters for executive session. So we have one item, which is discussion and strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30a, Section 21, A3 to it, ETA grievance.
Make a motion to go to executive session, and we'll convene at the executive session.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made in second to convene in executive session, where we will adjourn, and we will not be coming back out to the meeting, and no vote will be taken publicly. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Ten in the affirmative, zero the negative, motion carries. We are now going into executive session.